All right. Good evening, everybody. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for September 17th, 2020. We are starting the meeting at 7:07. And for this evening's attendance, John Michael O'Brien, Willman, and Commissioner Joan Bealey are not in attendance and excused for the evening. And I think that Commissioner Biella is maybe a little bit late, but hopefully they'll join us shortly. The agenda and meeting materials for tonight's meeting are available on the town's website. There are before or after this meeting for anybody that has interest to see the document that are available and are reviewed by the commission. We'll call the meeting to order and we have minutes to approve for September 3rd, 2020. Does anybody have any comments?
A motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Tim Ziegmond, any second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Brian Rogan. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, and so the motion passes. Scheduling of public hearings, a special permit, site plan, patients of Richard Monson, Demming Road Business Park LLC for a building on each of four existing lots and related site improvements. The suggested date for a public hearing is October 15th, 2020, at the request of the applicant. Item A, map 10-1, block 83, lot 3A, 7,500 square feet, Demming Road, building on a rear lot for contractor shop use. B, map 10-1, block 83, lot 3A1, Demming Road, 3,606 square feet, building for contractor shop use. C, map 10-1, block 83, lot 3A2, Demming Road, 6,750 square feet, building for contractor shop use. D, map 10-1, block 83, lot 3A3, 9,000 square feet, Demming Road, building on a rear lot for a contractor shop use. And that's it for that one. Do we have a motion for a motion for a public hearing?
Motion to place on the agenda.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any, Fran, for the record, Tim Ziegmond made the motion and Brian Rogan did the second. And the motion passes for October 15th. First item on commission business facade application of Michael and Rosemary Cassetta, Dairy Queen, 806 Farmington Avenue.
Any questions?
Get to the table.
So I talked to Brian Hughes today. How good now?
Good now.
Look that way. Howdy. So spoke with Brian Hughes today, who's our consultant side program. Mr. Cassette did not get in to see him until this afternoon, so I've been not having a rendition for you, so we'll update on that. I'm hoping for our upcoming meeting on October 1st, I know. The clock is ticking. Try to spend the money being able to be here with the program, but we'll give you an update as I have it.
Motion placed on October 1st.
And we have a motion to move this item to the October 1st meeting.
I'll second.
Curtis Holtman seconds. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And the motion passes. Item B on the agenda, discussion regarding motel properties along the Berlin Turnpike.
Just thinking, commissioners, Chris said again, been contacted by, from a couple of projects in Berlin already. It's a vacant motel. Southern Berlin Turnpike, just before you get to the T place on the. So it's a location that has a couple of small cottage-style motel units on the property. What he'd like to do is he is considering buying the property in order to convert the motel spaces into a park. Expand the existing building, then potentially build additional on the vacant land on the property. Couple different things with this. One, it's novel. Two, if we did this, my thought is if it's something that the commission was about to take up, it'd become limited to existing and/or operating in the last five years, hotels or motels only to be converted. And with the commission on language for density, et cetera. The opportunity here, one, no longer motel. Two, increase tax revenue because they put an investment into free possible housing options. I don't know a lot about motels, I know they've been here for a while, but I also know many of them. I've really gone under disrepair. Sadly, I parked one of the police officers yesterday, and he said they spent a lot of time at them as well. So again, great concept and wanted to see if this commission would be willing to examine it a little further. I know it's purely a concept, there would need to be a lot of things, including language that would both count, as well as have no unintended consequences, because we don't want to see them everywhere. But my thoughts is, my thoughts are, if we could take some of these, get them reinvested in, changed to use, I think it would be a benefit to the town of Berlin a lot.
If you have any questions or thoughts?
My thought is that, you know, those humans that have left these cottages, got the little cottages.
Yep.
But now, the big thing now is these mini homes. That's a regular home, but. Go home, that they. I think that concept would be pretty cool, you know, because they all look alike and they all, you know, have a little flavor to them. Design, you know. So we'd have to put design standards and stuff like that. But I think something like that, you know, they're not hourly rentals.
They're not.
And hotel rooms, they are a house, but they get housed.
I'd say definitely two things. One would be design standards, public construction standards, as well as potentially maximum size apartment. So one of the issues I know is always having school kids, et cetera. Maybe it's something where this commission says, yes, we'll do that. Happens, I heard quickly. And then from there, the discussion, that way, again, most importantly, it's going to be the language on which somebody can come in and advocate. So if you're amenable, I can go back to the applicant text. I can come in with maybe a formal exit amendment for discussion and then take action from there if this and the other members decided something that you'd like to consider adding to, that it would be the BT1 zone.
I agree, I think that our motels on the Berlin Turnpike, they're a whole negative image of Berlin. So one less motel is not a bad thing to get passed to the town. You know, like you said, manners for the, maybe would that be senior housing or something?
I think it would be senior and probably millennials. Because I know if you look at the units they're putting by the train station, they're looking at 600 to 900 or 1,000 for their studios in one bedroom. And slightly larger for two bedrooms.
So it would be like a loft.
Yeah, it would be like, yeah, you're basically, it would be one bedroom. If anything, it might be like a larger living dining room. But again, that would be more the developer, but I think it makes sense.
Okay.
Just a bit of a side note, one of our motels was closed down, actually neglected. So I can't say it's happening all over, I just know it did happen at one of them. So it's one of the things to kind of keep in mind. The potential upside in different ways, but also if that is happening, we definitely, if it does not, if they're not there.
Sounds good. I think homes are very popular right now, especially in Berlin. And the size gets put, you know, 800 or 1,000 square feet is.
If it's designed in like campus style, you know, like that, it's good.
And I think the feel and the look from the road and the feel when you're in there is going to be very important. Because essentially, when you're talking about walking here, however you put it, I think the greens, on somebody, we don't want to look like an urban development where it's six stories high block. That's not going to work for Berlin, especially not the turnpike. So I think it'll be a further discussion, but I really appreciate that the commission's insight. If you have any thoughts, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise I will.
I guess from my perspective, I would be interested to know where this has been implemented in other towns within the state. And if we have some feedback from those towns as to the pros and cons, it might help us to kind of frame text for any future amendments that we can.
And maybe some pictures, you know, of the other developments.
It's an idea. Each year they have a new area, they get a home in there. They have used the area, it's similar to that of Holtman. Light metal column going up and down. There are, I don't really know how.
I do know that there's three different zoning language that I found. One Connecticut, a couple in other states. The good thing is, this kind of a reuse, or I think what they call that is like a redevelopment overlaying. So you'd be able to limit the size and scope. Yeah, let me find that. So size, other towns, pictures, and then maybe some basic language to deal with. Over. Thank you all.
Can I add?
Of course, please, please.
So the health district has, that's my recollection is from meetings we had of the health district, that it is kinds of things they're working toward, they are have been looking into and studying. And the planning community is actively, overall, studying the reuse of of motels and such type uses that no longer have a marketplace really, or have over exceeded their quality because of upkeep and what have you. And I just wanted to note that, that we have, there are state, within Connecticut and within the area, some studies I believe have been, that I've gotten. Been passively active in some of the discussions. And it, one of the things it can do is alleviate the like prime issues with regard to the existing uses and provide yet another housing option. I think a component the commission will be thinking about is housing on the turnpike where it's commercial. But at the same time, it is what it is, pretty much now, that those uses serve us. So just wanted that feedback from you to make that connection as well. And that the social and economic issues that relate to it with, you know, the ability to have another housing choice is something that is. And we have some resources for, hopefully not a language, but certainly statistics that we'll look into. For sure, if we're given a green look, we'll do so.
Would this be something also that would be applicable to other than the BT1?
I think we could.
Yeah, I think it might be turnpike related. It would be, I think we have to look at it, but I would say only the turnpike. And maybe again, if it's an overlay like we did with the Berlin Turnpike Development Zone, excuse, same thing, if it's in zone X, Y, and Z with these limitations, that would make the most sense. That way it's not limited to a zone, it would be the entire stretch.
The land on the turnpike has, you think that the lots aren't deep and they're, you know, so they just funders, they're doing.
Yeah, if they were deep, we'd have to develop.
Right, right.
So we have to come up with something that we can put on those lots, you know, get their own gas station and that sort of, with the trailer on it, you know, that type of lot is a good place, you know.
And I, a couple of the time, especially now that we're in COVID, to look at what might be possible on the turnpike, particularly Southern Berlin. We can see with Amazon and COVID that the retail is going up. This point is going into the two, like two developments, again. We're getting small units near apartments. So we're going to have two new restaurants going next to Eckerd. We're going to have less folks going into our, there's a new coffee shop across in the old Tybeck. So you can see that's what they want, you know, small units near the housing. So I think as we continue on our discussions, the turnpike, I think is something to look at. As you would say, you have some lands that's been there for a while. I don't know the fit, but I appreciate these discussions, but it's helpful to be able to kind of kick things around in a similar way.
The other thing that comes, I'm sorry, Brian. The other thing that comes to mind for me that's something like this would be public transportation and availability for public transportation to, you know, the proximity to where these sites.
It's a discussion that I've had already with DOT in 2018. Because the way the bus routes were set up, there was no buses that went down in Park Drive. There's 1,000 plus jobs on the road. Definitely if this happens, I would have a discussion again, because I think the main bus line goes down the Chamberlain Highway to the mall. It's good for the mall, but.
They want to go to Walmart.
Got you.
But MBT, it wanted to go south of the turnpike from DOT at the time.
We can start that, but no, I appreciate, I appreciate. Oh, it gives me a lot of things to think about and talk about with the developer as well as with my community.
I did not long ago look at those bus routes. Yeah, the minimal lines of the turnpike, but they cross to other.
I think they stop, I think they stop at Home Depot, truthfully.
Yeah, yeah, I believe so.
And they could readjust, because I mean, nobody's, I mean, nobody's going to Meriden Mall. You know, it's not Meriden Mall.
Because there's a bus stop at the corner of Orchard Mall.
Yes. Yeah, have you seen anybody standing there like?
Actually, I have. Actually, I do it.
They do find those bus stops.
Well, the bus goes straight to the Amazon warehouse.
In my community, guys, there's, they have the bus line that goes into New Haven. And amazing the number of professionals for the last five years. Started every morning, you see, with their brief cases off, going through all. It's exciting, from a planning standpoint, it's exciting, but I got excited by it bizarre. The, what I would just wanted to clarify, and I don't even know if you need to respond. I was thinking we'd be looking at language related to conversion, but I'm hearing you'd move on a sixth floor, a little beyond just conversion, but also other places, properties that just aren't the right dimensional fit for other uses. Having been successful.
Sounds that way.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Do you need a motion from us, or you just needed to kind of deal with the discussion?
I wanted discussion to be that.
Absolutely. No, 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 this is great, because this way, I kind of have marching orders to get some kills on these things, we can come back to you. And then it'll also help me to work with the developer to come up with some language. Because he's going to need to work financially, we need him to work for us. Then we're going to get the desired result we want without getting somebody that doesn't.
You've got a big workforce, like FedEx Building, Middle Street, stuff like that, and all those big, big buildings that are right now. They're right over the line in Middletown, but there'd be a good workforce that comes to the turnpike, you know? Since the price range is the.
Well, if you have folks, let's say nine, and the turnpike, and there's different apartments down there, maybe you see a restaurant end up next to the package store. Because right now, there isn't one, and I understand. There's opportunities, because you bring those in, who will look at the area a different way, knowing that they have the industry.
They love that, that was, they've done next to a working point.
That's good. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening, be well.
You too, Bob. All right. Okay, so the next item. Maureen, should we postpone the next item to the agenda until Jennifer gets here?
Let me look at the quick, I'm trying to get the screen changed.
Oh, yeah.
I think. If the. Where is she?
Just so you know, I'm here on the carrier, I did expect her to be here, but she's here for meetings tonight, once she was able to continue, I don't know, at her.
I understand she's on her way, but she's just running late. If you wouldn't mind, we can maybe shift our agenda a bit and. Okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Make a motion that C, 4C.
You're on carrier, you said?
4C is Silver Island Homes, right?
Yes.
4, 4C, and 5A.
These folks are here, I think, for Silver Island Homes, right? Just to allow her, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Postpone until our attorney gets here.
Okay.
Exactly. Don't know, we have very many people on the line to re-announce about the military. As well, because you did direct to the hearing starting.
Yes, yep.
So just in case they're hanging around.
Yeah, it looks like there's just two people on the line. But anybody that's online waiting for the military experience in public hearing, that item has been continued to the October 1st meeting. And there will be no. I have a. About is making an adjustment. Time for our attorney to arrive in a wee moment, I guess, to make a. We'll move item B under new business up for the next item on the agenda. Site plan amendment, application of John P. Demko. You approved 100-foot open space subdivision buffer on lot 13-3 for a buffer of 72 feet to allow for the construction of an 18 by 36-foot in-ground pool on lot 13-3, 20 hours landing. So we need to have a motion to move that up and then.
I'll make a motion to move to business, or B, and postpone section 4C and section 5A till afterward when our attorney.
A motion by Brian, Chris Holtman. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, hello?
Hello.
You're okay to take your mask off, it's hard to talk with it.
Good evening, so thank you for hearing us, saving my Joe Castile, professional engineer, consulting department, Allison Chris Castile. I'm here tonight representing John Demko, who is the owner of 20, lot number three, I'm sorry, Cormier Woods, or Park Park's Landing, this means the road. We're here today looking to seek a reduction in your foot setback requirement for the buffer requirement, because the property was developed as an open space. Specifically, regulations, open space, on section 5A.
Trust me, this coffee here. Please, we'll find out.
Well, they're having.
Specifically in the regulation, what it says is that developing an open space subdivision, or is a requirement for a original property, permanent property line, which we had accommodated on plants. Mr. Demko, since such type purchase, actually constructed his house as part of the construction of the house, how it's getting in line. It's a ranch house, we had to, there is an area, this is property. In addition to one of the things we were looking to do, as part of the development of his house, constructing an open pool. The whole house was laid out to construct an open pool. We need to go back to see the permit to actually install a pool. And locally hold, when you look at the actual regulations, what it says is there's no structures allowed to. We use specific definitions, we use only regulations. Structures, sections, swimming pools, ballroom structures. It doesn't differentiate above ground or below ground pools. So what I'd like to do is continue on, if it helps, I have boards, I have reduced scale printouts of all the boards. If you can't handle them, otherwise I could use the boards to further this length.
Other ones.
So the first map that you're going to pop is the.
Camera, you can come to the center table, maybe.
Let me stop showing my screen.
Neither of these.
Do that, I do that one. This table.
I don't want for this. Comfortable for presentations.
So I don't know, kind of other. Just hit the orange button on the far left, where's it stop here?
Couldn't have made it bigger than the board for me, could it?
So the first map, your package and the map that I have up on the screen is the original render. The area dark green, where the proposed tree line. The lot number three that we're talking about, if I come up, Cormier Woods Road, or if it's pretty, if I come up to the cul-de-sac, and we take a right to the cul-de-sac. The lot that we're talking about is lot number three, except that the end. Oh, it's part of this. There also. That's the 100-foot, the western bumper buffer as part of the subdivision. The second page, it's just a blow-up, I know it's hard to read as long as the other planes, so I just gave you a blow-up of that same page of that lot. Once again, situated, there was the tree clearing here. And then orange line, there's a 100-foot buffer. The third plane was the actual plot plane that was submitted to the house. You see the footprint there, it's a ranch house, because that was pre-parked a lot. We did have to situate it away. So the back, the north side of the house is right up against that 100-foot buffer. And we do have a proposed pool, proposed off of the fourth end of that house. When the full contractor actually went to file for the construction of the pool, that's inherent, or whereas to us, that there was an issue with regulations within the interpret, that pool, that's in structure. So therefore, when you continue to read into your regulations, what it says is that this commission actually can't waive this requirement, allow for a reduction in the buffer requirement, if they find that natural features such as topography, distillation, is sufficient for screening of the property. So the fourth plan I copied is site plan. Just color it up to give you a better idea of where the house is, where the proposed pool is going to be. What I also did is I took the actual shading I had in dark green for that original subdivision, superimposed on this plan to show you that we are fitting everything, all the patio and the house, all within what was already approved here as part of this development. I think the more important part to look at is what's actually out there. So in the last portion of this package, you have four photos. The first photo, I'm scanning there, the Westily, or the right-hand coffee line, looking back along the back of the house to the, to the west. I'm saying this is probably the west. So looking at, it's basically on the left-hand side of that photo would be the port, the patio, apart from the back of the house, the dirt area, the existing area, the den was cleared as part of the improved subdivision. And that's where the pool itself would be going, you can see the tree line off to the right. The next three photos are all photos standing on the porch, looking back at the neighboring property. And as you can see from all three photos, basically looking direct on to the northwest, and then looking to the northeast, you can't see a neighboring property. So the reason. Out there, that neighboring property, which the house is set pretty far back, the map, you can see. Again, the feeling was, I can understand having to set back required infrastructures, such as if someone wanted to go back and put a garage in here, not put a garage built against the property line. If someone wanted to put a above-ground pool, and you have a four-beat underground fence, and now the thing's able to hide up against the property. Talking about a substantial pool, you know, $100,000 improvement to the pool, and patio around the pool, which we could put the patio in that area anyways. So we felt, you know, again, just because the way the regulation is written, doesn't differentiate between above-ground, below-ground pools. So we hope the commission will read the grandest reduction of the buffer area. Uh, we did receive comments, I'm from Maureen, um, in agreement with all of them, all of them. Um, I think you only talked about that we didn't fill the plan, it's a possibility that we had additional location, um, this demo is here with me deceiving, um, we talked about that if necessary, but we'll bring up point, that station in, um, get a little more action.
Um, no additional station needs to be moved in order to have access for equipment to do what they have to do.
The pool's gonna be ten feet off the house, uh, and then there's a, there's a three-foot backside, there's just a three-foot back, our three-foot patio on the backside of the fence along that. Everything is being done, as you can see.
Oh, then ten feet off, out. Thirty-five foot rear yard along, is we go through the pool. Uh, that's the earlier yard that, uh, that the structure can't go past that thirty-five
Uh, so actually, there's a hundred-foot line in the original, um, the open space. A hundred-foot line. So that hun, that house, the back of the house is right up against us. So that's what we're seeing.
Over the orange line is the.
The rear line.
Your pictures, I actually can see a house through the trees. I just looked at the satellite. Right there, you can see the peak of a house. Um, house is actually down there. Looking for the northwest.
So the fence line would be at about twenty-two feet from the property line.
Twenty-two feet from the back of the property.
May, I'm working on, I'm, I'm. Pass, I'm gonna share that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
While you're doing that, I got a question, uh. It's both with not the bus, it doesn't go to ZBA, but the, the, yeah, actually, I think.
So, we, oh, I'm sure. So we did look into that, and the reason it goes to the commission is because the buffer is something the commission is allowed to modify during the site plan approval process. So it's part of the site plan approval as to where the buffer is, and it's not a ZBA action like the, um, the, uh, setback is a set number in the regulation, and, you know, but this, the regulations give the planning, the zoning commission the authority to move this buffer during the review process of a subdivision. So not a matter of the hardship, it's a matter of demonstrating that it meets the criteria for the buffer to be adjusted.
Attorney said this was ADA.
Sure. Yeah, it's totally easy to ADA compliant.
Okay, so it's ADA, ADA compliant.
As part of the use of corporate area.
Right, right, but, uh, so, the action of the ZBA commission is easier than us moving up a line, moving that buffer line, uh, more, uh, that buffer is going like that, you know, the other next to it, now that's still got a hundred.
That's true, if we consider the in-ground pools.
Well, I understand it.
I don't consider a structure, I don't see any difference between.
Because it's ADA compliant home, uh, and ZBA could say, okay, they need this for, uh, for, uh, ADA compliant, uh, and that can be granted by ZBA. And we don't have to move our lines. So, and, and, you know, this lot number four, what happened, uh, uh, lot number one, where they have a hundred-foot buffer, and this one come out twenty-five feet, whatever, and can go around. So instead of doing a square, ZBA can just say, you know, they need, they need it because ADA and a bird, because that's a hardship.
So, it's one major player, it's only lot three.
I think. Well, it's only lot three, but lot, lot.
He's worried about our.
A hundred lot, a hundred-foot line, a lot four, and a hundred-foot line, a lot one.
So I, I mean, so.
You're changing the line back straight.
So first of all, the exact word, so, so, uh, it says the buffer, this is again on the section five A D. Or, or, or sent, uh, I remember maybe group is by the commission, who finds the existing top, natural features, existing vegetation, will provide a sufficient buffer, but it is allowed to be with. I think if anyone else wanted to do this, uh, they're, I'm in a case of space, I could tell you lot number one is about three hundred feet, I don't think it's happening. Four, uh, you know, I don't know, they, they want to do this, and then all, that's that, uh, they're all sufficiently, especially the ones on the downhill side, um, they butt up against the door of the open space.
Once we have the open space, we, we eliminate the line by markers. Markers are probably there, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't approve this subdivision.
Yes, we are, we are required, so.
Okay, so, so you would have to move, move that, the markers.
So, so the, the, the open space was granted, approved, that part of the subdivision is fifty feet wide. It's different, it's not the open space that's required, this, this is the buffer.
The buffer.
Again, the regulation reads, you can't create structures, approved, already approved as part of the subdivision, who fixed the clearing, uh, into a, issue came up, the structures we, we missed on, house was designed, so it's, it's not a, the monuments was thinking right, right, along the open space as part of the subdivision, those are from the backdrop.
I think, you know, for me, the open space subdivisions, I think, um, I some division, the open space areas to into the, more of a community space, you know, so, um, in this circumstance, uh, I don't find the proposal to be, uh.
I don't think, I, I don't have any problem with the pool.
I don't.
Be easier to be DA, and, and work proper than us changing our buffer line. The ZBA is going to be able to, the ADA say, you know, and they have the same thing, topo and stuff like that, they've got to say, this guy's a topo or whatever, their, reason's got to be some kind of hardship, the hardship is the pool, or their.
Absolutely.
Should I come up there?
Please do, don't mind.
Let me address this ADA situation. Um, he designed a home.
Uh, before you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, before you start, would you please, just for the record, identify yourself?
Absolutely.
And you can take your mask off if it's more comfortable for you.
Uh, my name is John Demko, uh, I'm the owner of lot three, uh, on Hawks Landing, or ten Hawk, number, number ten Hawksland in Decormier Woods. When my wife and I, um, were looking to build, we've lived in borough for twenty, we have two kids that live here, we have grandchildren that live here, three grand dogs that live here, and we wanted to stay close by, not, we're not snowbirds because the kids here, the grandchildren. So with this, I started working with Ray Decormier five years ago on this property with the idea of building a house, and it evolved, and so we, we ultimately, when Jim got involved, several things happened. I was diagnosed with severe rheumatoid arthritis, uh, I've had back surgery, I've had four vertebrae fuse, I've got hip done. I said to my wife, Jim, I said, one of the things you need, those make this house as easy to get around as possible. So ADA, Jim, is absolutely valid, with the exception of the fact that it's, it's, it's higher. We don't have under counter, uh, wheelchair access yet, we have three-foot doorways, we have no steps into the garage, no steps into the front door, no steps out from the patio to the pool. That's, that's by, that's by design, so it's not ADA per se, however, it's designed, so in the, down the road, if either my wife or I need to be in a wheelchair, we'll be able to buy a few more years in the house before we. When we were going to build, I said to Jim, I said, Jim, what do you think that flattest lot, the best lot would be for us, he said, so we, we picked great, uh, we designed our house, not, uh, we designed it around the pool, we didn't design the pool around the house. And the pool was originally, when we submitted our proposal to the town for, for our plans, the pool was on the plan. We expected no difficulty, so we, we have a back porch that goes out, that's a, that go out onto the patio, which shows you the pictures that is designed for us. Water, water is, swimming is one of the best actual exercises for arthritis and your back. It is, it's, build your back muscles and everything, so that's what this is all about. I impol, request that the commission, don't delay the plan here so we can get this pool started, because if I wait a little bit longer on, I'll go this year, which means I can't really finish it until the end of next year as a, you, you need the left around, settle around the pool and everything else. My old guy keeps calling me as a. That, you know, we're waiting for that, I think that's schmaring, we're asking for the barriers and the pools. If, I don't remember very many of you, when I, when I proposed, when I, when I said before the commission about the subdivision, and how we were going to make sure that it not worked. And Twitter was cut down, and when I cleared the lot, I said, I asked Jim to come out and peg it, peg the tree line, to peg the property line, so I wouldn't have, would cut down anything that I did. As you can see from the existing vegetation, uh, in the backyard, our neighbors at all, and, and that's, that's by design. Doesn't want to see me, I don't want to see him, we can walk to each other's house, but that's as far as it goes. So I'm, I'm just hoping that we agree and you, I humbly request that you grant these variables to me deceiving, so I can proceed with this construction. Um, and that's, that's all I have to say unless you have any questions for me.
Very much.
You're welcome.
All right, um, I would just, I, you know, obviously, you always see my staff comments, et cetera, but questions with staff as to what the proper procedure should be with regard to the language in the subdivision, and the understanding of those regulations that the buffer, and I'm actually going to read it, but then, um, say a little about the understanding of it, is to provide a buffer between OSS or DOSD and surrounding properties, no structure shall be located within a hundred feet of the overall perimeter boundary, this buffer will not be required long than a hundred feet of the street, and the buffer requirement may be reused by the commission, and that's the rest of the sentence, it's in the, um, rest of the sentence is in the staff report, but it was on that language where we do allow, you know, they, e, except for in subdivisions such as this, where they have a limit of clearing area that was approved by the commission on their subdivision. They, they can, um, in these buffer areas, um, it can be lawn, um, we don't consider place gapes, trampolines, things like that, structures, those can all be out there, it is, um, uh, an area that's utilized by the property owner, it's not a buffer that is restricted in use like a conservation area or the open space around the perimeter of this, um, and we think that language can get confusing to people, so both for the commission or anyone listening, to understand the difference between a conservation buffer and one that is restricted, um, in that regard, and one that is, this one is restricted to structures, and in the, there have been situations where the commission during the subdivision approval process has, um, varied the buffer because the applicants have asked that at the time. This is the applicant coming back, and then that's why they came to this route, is they're coming back for an amendment to the site plan, went with the subdivision.
Um, I'm just wondering if it would make sense, um, to sort of revisit the language about pools as structures in some future point, um, because, uh, you know, the, the whole patio aspect and especially the in-ground pool not being visually obstructive in any way, um, maybe have a flaw.
So they still have, just to, uh, just to clarify, he has access, a hundred, uh, even though it's a hundred-foot buffer, he has access to that fifty feet, so if he decides he could clear that twenty-two feet of tree, put on a nice big lawn.
I don't believe he can clear from this tree line because of the way the subdivision was approved as it being the proposed, goodness, proposed limit of clearing, um, approved limit of clearing. That's the way this Mylar was, um, it, the Mylar was filed. Line, which is frequently shown on a plan, but it doesn't have that notation that says approved. I interpret that as a commission must have said. Or they proposed, we're not going to do it, but.
But he's not proposing that.
But he's not proposing to move that line, so that's what the green line is, is the limit of clearing, the pink or red line is where they're proposing to move the buffer to, um, and, and it does affect it just at this corner, um, but at the same time, we still have the limit of clearing at that spot, and then the purple line is the existing buffer dimension. This area back here, which is this fifty feet, um, is still, remains subject to the open space conservation, open space limitations as filed with that, that, um, D for that's, that property. By the homeowners association, if I remember correctly.
I don't have any problem, but that, that, that's not, that's not the problem.
I can just comment personally, I don't think in ground pools, like, I don't, I don't personally, it's a structure, maybe that's not the correct definition, but to me, it's not a structure, uh, so I, I got issues.
I agree. That sounds to be a language issue that we could deal with down the road, like Diane suggested earlier.
Is there a motion to make?
I think most of the proof.
And were there staff comments that you?
Um, the staff comments, um, relate to the filing of the Mylar, I, I believe Mr. Cassidy, I think he, um, or rather, indicated he could read with all of the, the staff comments, um, that were given.
The only one was about the additional vegetation.
Because that is one of the, um, criteria in paving is whether or not the commission should consider if additional landscaping or screening was being required for any reduced upper area, that is one of the, the, um, um, in, in the reduct, where, here it says you can reduce the buffer, it says such buffer area shall be landscaped so as to provide screening as deemed appropriate by the commission, the commission may require firms for, as part of landscaping, and to provide additional screening. So it was a matter of, that's one of the things to consider when, um, if the buffer gets reduced, so do you have any need for any additional landscaping from what's.
And change the line of the trees, tree line.
The pool has that, that's right.
Right.
I'm kind of surprised with the situation.
Okay, so.
And we already clarified, we already clarified, um, comment four, which the buffer exists, you know, the approved, uh, the approved tree line, I'm sorry, the approved tree line is what, comment number four.
Are there any others?
The others are, uh, are, are staff comments, I would like to be incorporated. The others are, uh, are staff comments, I would like to be incorporated. Yes, it remains the staff comments.
So you have a motion to approve, is that subject to staff comments?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Yes, so excluding, excluding four.
Four, excluding four and five. Motion is amended, so Tim Ziegman is making the motion to approve subject to staff comments excluding comments number four and five. Seconded by. Right, second the amendment, right? Okay, and, um, those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, nobody, and so it passes.
Thank you. So I just, I plan to look into the wording, what structure. And, and one single lot taking the buffer in the subdivision. Buffer has to be moved because of, oh, well, it's something that we said, you know, I have a problem with it at all. But, uh, you know, just, just a question, that's all it is.
So, um, to hear that item, we adjusted the, um, agenda, uh, so we're going to be back on track. Do I need a motion at all, or we're just back on track, right?
You didn't move that item up, now you're going.
Yes, yeah. Uh, so, um, the next agenda under commission business is item C. Discussion of Required Bonding Concerning Performance of the Tree Preservation and Vegetation Management Plan. In terms of related settlement agreement Silver Island Homes LLC. Maureen, do you have anything, or shall we start with?
I believe our coverage is in council, but he hasn't yet.
Well, how, how that is needed, um, really what we're here for today. Jennifer Capola from Seals in Austria Corporation Council, um, for the.
I can hear you, just.
Um, I get that a lot, so. Yeah, Jennifer Capola from Seals in Austria Corporation Council. Um, I did do a memo on this agenda item, um, it is down for discussion. Uh, and the plan in question dates back to two thousand and four, um, so it is quite old. Um, and we do have, uh, two cities, Di Matteo or do you say Di Matteo?
Di Matteo.
Uh, we have Armin Di Matteo here, uh, he is the principal of, um, Silver Island Homes LLC. Um, and, uh, we had a teleconference, uh, with, uh, Mr. Di Matteo and his counsel. Emmanuel Manjefi Bro last week, um, and myself and, uh, Mr. And. Uh, we're in the back. Trade council represents, um, Vincent Russia and Joseph Russia. Um, and the facts are pretty much what are taken in the back that I've been through this evening. Um, there was a, um, settlement that was entered into in, um, administrative appeal. Brought against the commission and it required performance again of, of the reference tree preservation and vegetation management plan for silver estates. It was prepared by, um, arborist, uh, Peter Seemoreitz. It's dated October two, two thousand and four, it's as attached to the new world. Um, it provides essentially the board, uh, for performance essentially of the management plan. And, uh, I did then, uh, that was. Uh, basically supervised. And we decided that it would be best for the, for the commission to hear from Mr. Di Matteo about what has actually occurred. With respect to the points of the plan, because this court will have is, is, uh, the bond that was placed was a letter of credit. And the town received notice where people say, um, credit. Um, and so there is some additional work that remains, but the question is, is what is the appropriate, uh, net. So given the background of it, wanting to have a discussion with the commission, we hope that it would not be the. For either staff or council to essentially modify on our own the term of the settlement. And we may recall that Joseph Russia came in last year as the underlying approvals, the special. It's like, I aspire, and he did get new approvals, um, of those applications, uh, chat last August. And it also to be down by, um, the initial, uh, the settlement. So that's where we are. So, uh, Mr. Di Matteo has quite a bit of support for this, again. Um, I've not been involved, um, just recently became aware over the past year or so of what was going on with this project. Um, and did, uh, with prior quitter that the purpose had expired and that the purpose needs to be sought. So that was the view that I had given, um, and obviously, uh, your active plan was not. At the time that this plan is coming and settlement. So, Mr. Di Matteo, shall I? What, what performance actually did occur on the plan?
Um, before you start, I just have one little housekeeping thing that I need to address. Um, I forgot to, um, say for the record that, um, Steve Biella arrived at seven forty two. And is seated, um, for this item, so, um, he's, uh, here and joining us at the beginning of the discussion on this item. Go right ahead.
Awesome. Armin Di Matteo from Silver Island. Um, when we had this project approved, there was a stipulation that the commission did not want any of the trees cut. Those houses in the lake. Prior to our project, it was another project where they cut all the trees right down to the lake and it was like just cleared. That's what they didn't want to happen. So we agreed to keep the trees. We were allowed to cut any dead trees, prune anything while the arborist was on board. So we did have Peter Maritz, um, come in and plan together prior to the approval. And when those approved, that's, as we were developing the property, Peter Maritz was cutting trees, trimming trees, cabling trees. Any big trees that were V that might tap, he was cabling them. We fertilized some of them and he cut some of the birches and knotted black birches. And as the project went along, we had talked to the commission and we talked to Helen Riggins about another for tree arborists. I did meet with Chairman Moore and Helen Riggins and they allowed us to switch. I can explain the reasons, just, we had to switch. So we did hire total care and they were approved by Helen and the chairman. And they took over where Peter left off. During the whole time when the houses were being built, the idea was anytime a house is being built. Beside where the trees were, extra special care had to be taken, trimming, all that, so the trees wouldn't all die in that area. So we did that and we did, every time Helen would take a ride through there, she would call us and say, there's a tree that needs to be cut. Or what's the latest update? And we would give her an assessment. So Michael Kennedy was actually the guy at the time and it was Tree Care. They have since been bought out by Davy Tree Care, I believe it is. So, again, as the project was going on, it is written in our bylaws that no cutting by anyone can happen in the conservation area. This happened three or four times by the homeowners. And we were pulled into the commission, had gone to the planning and zoning meeting, saw trees cut that weren't supposed to be cut. Every time that happened, we, uh, we drew a new plan, we replaced the trees, we came up with a plan and we, we hired a landscaper. And we replaced the trees to the commission's satisfaction. That wasn't our responsibility. I know we had a tree bound up, but they were cut. Again, it happened three or four times and every time we did set up and we did make it right with the commission and with Helen at the time. So, at this point, it's been so many years, we had asked that the bond be reduced or the tree preservation bond be eliminated. Because the idea was to hopefully have a project start and finish within years. It didn't happen that way between the economy and everything else that was going on, so. I guess there's got to be a point where, when does it naturally occur where a tree dies that we're not responsible for? Forever. So, and we've had this bond up for sixteen years, so. We're asking to have that reduced. I, I did talk with Maureen and I said, if there's any work that's left to be done. We did go through it, we're willing to put up a bond for that. Um, the sidewalks were, and replaced the broken ones, um, by Russia, because I guess some of them broke when they were building a house. So I talked to them today, those have been repaired and everything, should be all said there. We do have some more trees to plant and some more sidewalks to put in. And again, we're willing to post a bond for that, but we're just trying to amend a tree preservation bond if we can. So when we were talking, um, we thought it is something that could possibly be done, so that's why we're here.
So, um, Mr. Di Matteo had made the offer, uh, having someone who said that total tree has been, I don't.
Yeah, but it's still, there's still certain.
Of having somebody go in and just take over the conservation investment area, um, to see if there's anything that they. So that was something that was discussed, um, in, in the conversation. Again, it does sound like based on current representations that we, that they were.
I'm a little curious why a plan would go so far as to be cabling trees in a conservation area. Um, the work involved to be doing that type of, um. Surgery, so to speak, on a tree, um, is, it doesn't seem to be.
For safety, because some of them.
Why wouldn't we remove that over? And we have.
They, they did not, but hold on, they did not want us to remove the trees. They wanted all the trees that could be kept alive, saved, they want left alone.
And they is who?
That the commission and Helen Riggins. So it wasn't, uh, it feels up to me, honestly, if we were allowed to, I would have cut all the trees. So then you would have a beautiful view of the lake. I'm being honest, I mean, so, yes, it was one of the things that happened. It wasn't us, it was just the way they wanted, so.
There was trees cut and when it came back to commission, uh, those trees were cut and they're gone. And the commission at the time said, that, that's it, there's not going to be anymore and you've got to keep all the trees up.
But that wasn't our project, though.
And the conservation was supposed to be marked. Uh, it was with markers.
It is.
So the homeowners should have known that they couldn't go by that line because those line markers are supposed to be in there. And they went by the, by, past the line. This is when the commission decided, ah, no more, because we had it happen so many times, so, so.
Right, but I'm in before any house was sold and the conservation reason was declared early on. And it is part of the bylaws, so where, there's actually a drawing that goes with it that shows the conservations.
So, uh, what type of bond reduction?
Well, I'd like to. The tree bond, I mean, again, at what point is it like a naturally occurring thing where?
If I can explain, the bond is divided up by, and, and we just, we had the, um, when we, the commission, um, uh, released. The bond for the paving a few weeks ago, I think it was August twentieth meeting for the national. It was the August twentieth meeting, um, you release that and, um, the bond itself is no, a bond sheet for a single bond. But in the settlement agreement has a thousand dollar, uh, line item that is specifically the forty five thousand from the tree settlement. Or the settlement plan that is with regard to the trees. So then there are, um, say, with regard to the size of the project, minimal bonding amounts left. That relate to those sidewalks that just got put in and the, um, I think some landscaping trees in their center island. I think those are actually the only two items that are still on that bond sheet. Um, I understand some of the sidewalks went in yesterday or today. We, the staff is not prepared to, to reply to whether those can be reduced, they will have the, the, uh. The items to be installed, the sidewalks and the landscape trees in the center island that are not part of the conservation area, they're common. Um, they'll have to have a maintenance bond, you know, we have to keep a bond for a certain amount of time if they're just installing it, I'm sorry, this is false. Um, if they're just installing it, then they, the commission will keep the bond for a year for maintenance. So we haven't reviewed because it wasn't installed yet, so I don't have that. What the subject matter is, the forty five thousand dollar maintenance bond with regard to the settlement. And that relates to the conservation area, not about performing.
I have a question about the settlement agreement and the validity of a plan that's, that was submitted by somebody who's not even involved anymore. Have the new licensees revised plan?
They have not revised the plan, they took that when we met with Helen and we reviewed everything and they were very clear as to what needed to be done, so. And their license.
Who again is that?
Uh, Total Tree Care.
Okay, so Total Tree was saying, like, they understood, is that what you mean by?
I'm sorry, so when we asked to switch, if we were allowed to switch. We met with Helen Riggins and Chairman Moore and they said we were allowed to switch as long as the person or the company that was coming in. Was certified and was capable of doing what was on the plan. And it was agreed, we didn't, you know, say anything, they came in, thing and. It was approved by Helen Riggins and Chairman Moore to be able to use this other company. I mean, he's not the only arborist around, so it's like, that's why.
It seems like the licensee would put his stamp on revised plan.
Yeah, but you know, we were in construction and they, he just surveyed and he gave Helen assessments and that's the way we. And she would drive through, like, there's a couple of times there was dead trees. Had that cut because it was one by the pump house that she wanted to cut. We went and we cut it as long as it was, as long as everybody knew about it. Not any trees that weren't supposed to be cut in the conservations. Again, there were people that did cut trees, ninety percent of them did not, but there were individuals that did.
There are some, some quotes from the homeowners association, uh, who did come today, would like to address the issue. On the discussion item, that's one thing as well. They, they, in terms of the last representation that was made earlier as well, um, it is something that I did hear. That, uh, there were a couple of homeowners, there was one in particular, she did it repeatedly at times, she's no longer with us, um, but she did cut a few trees as one of her beloved.
A lot of trees.
So, so they would like to be perfect, it's fine, they're considering certain representations.
Are, are you, did, did you have anything else you wanted to share with us?
No, I think that's it. I mean, and everything's on record, so when we fixed the problem, when we addressed it with the commission. I mean, we came again, three or four times at least to repair what happened in the conservations. And again, it wasn't us, it was, but we, we ended up paying for it all. I was almost better off letting them take the forty five free bond, I would have been done, but I didn't and whatever, so here we are today. But yes, I'm, whatever.
I'd just add to the homeowners.
Would you please, I tell you.
I'm sorry, my name is Jean Hotch, I'm a former president of the homeowners association, I currently live in West Hartford. The homeowners who were taking down trees in the conservation area.
The homeowners who were taking down trees in the conservation area, they were some of the first homeowners to enter the community. And there was a sense of lack of supervision. On a number of things. Several of them weren't paying dues. Several of them were, were cutting down trees. Doing other things like salting trees and stuff like that. All those people are gone or have come on board. Everybody who's in the HOA now knows they're not to touch any trees without coming through the HOA. Do you have something to say? Please identify.
Yes. Good evening. I am Angela Lolo, one forty two Silver Island Way. Thank you all this evening for being here under all circumstances. Well, I would like to ask a question of bonding and performance related to the tree preservation education plan. One, after many years under the mismanagement of the community's developer, Silver Island Homes LLC. The homeowners of Silver Island Way have finally benefited from construction of undeveloped lots. This is not being done by Silver Island LLC. But by Mr. Breschow Construction after they purchased partial development rights on five of the six undeveloped lots in the community. One note, that silver lots of the plan of units, in other words, very important to our small community. One house has been built, two others have been to begin construction. But this month before Peoples Bank canceled the bonds for the Silver Island Homes LLC. And put further construction in our community into serious question. Two, over the past several years, Silver Island Homeowners Association, we have requested the permission of all the bond, forty five thousand. With conservation areas without success. We know that Mary. College, I said, I never pronounce it right, I said. Compiled a thorough history of the conservation area and the bond. We know that the town. Or aware of this, but. In the meantime, with the permission of the commission, the Silver Island homeowners have spent its own limited funds to remove or render non-threatening several trees in the conservation area. Three, we on the homeowners board have previously stated to the committee during the hearing on the reauthorization of the site plan, are strong opposition to holding Mr. Breschow responsible for assuming, assuming the bond and/or obligations for its settlement provision. Then as now, we believe that for the commission to do so, we prompt Mr. Breschow to abandon future and instead seek to sell the remaining lots. This will be a severe blow to our community and to the town. Pressing effect on the value and stability of our homes, the town will also lose trust revenue. Four, the bond management plan being part of the court settlement out to be easily dealt with via the court. Settlement was reached some sixteen years ago. We know. At this juncture, the developer of Silver Island Homes LLC has not been constructively involved in the community for many years. To put it simply, the homeowners of Silver Island Way have already suffered under the failures of the developer. To put it simply, the homeowners of Silver Island Way have already suffered. I said the failures of. Mr. Breschow, who has similarly suffered lapses, the lapses of the developer have to deliver what the community needs. The completion of construction. We find it difficult to believe that the courts would cause additional loss and suffering to our community by enforcing a settlement that no longer serves any purpose. The board and the members of Silver Island community would encourage that the commission not seek to replace the bond. And instead, seek an amendment to the settlement or its cancellation. So that no further bond remains that the plan we set aside.
Want to comment about Helen's.
No, I mean.
About this, about the settlement. So I have our incorporation process why. In terms of the settlement agreement, and I know we've done some other settlement. Like with one reason that went through the commission. There was a provision in that settlement agreement where it was. So this is an old case. And it appears to, from the file, that there was a hearing. Some court notices in the file because often turning. And it's one of these four, you settle into this, you can go by settlement agreement or by separate. How would this be? Typically, that was my preference. Four, settlement agreements are sometimes. There's a notice in this file about the settlement. Hearing of, but there's no subsequent notice reflecting that hearing actually. And when I worked to it, there was no information to be had on it. And I think it's because it wasn't that. That was a little bit odd because, you know, you recall too that I told you about our practice. It's been this way for a lot of years. Cause I've been doing this. Last month. Law in this area, this area. And, and when you settle a case regardless of participation or so, I explained this to my boss. There, there's a practical provision that provides that a settlement or a draw, any administrative. Has to be on the agenda of the board, so of the administrative. And the public is allowed to come and, it's all just.
Always good to have a refresh.
Cause it was researched. So there's nothing to remember. That was done, that subsequently, there was a hearing in the court. So I don't, I'm gonna tell you, I mean, we're old and ready now. But I had to recently have a Vista executive session down on the agenda. Or before I didn't practice law, I was a clerk for a couple of years. When I first got out of law school, studying. And I was a one with Vista, full song, some full vibes. But I think that this is too. I don't think I'm gonna. On it. And certainly it's not on the document. You go, you run the document, run the pardon statements. You're not finding the exception. It's a two thousand. So. I think, you know, when this came up, what would you do? I mean, the other thing. I'm from when they weren't part of that, it's all lawyers. And counsel, I think Ken Slater was a counselor for Breschow. But they also didn't provision in there how any terms of the settlement can be modified. There's nothing in it. That's gonna skip. As far as the other. In terms of calling the bond. The issue with that, and we didn't really get into it. We talked about the reduction of the bond. Yes. It was way in the beginning. But, you know, both myself and attorney general to. Look at the bond itself by the credit. And the provision for calling the bond required that the town make a certain certification about the work and not being performed. And, you know, there were minutes, there were documents that were provided by Mr. Jean-Mateo in particular. I don't know ultimately what documents.
You've never been privy to those documents.
Okay. Is that, I, I attended a meeting with the homeowners association, this is going back to when. And they wanted to gather some information. My understanding from the meeting was that there was. Records were tampered with or something. I was. But the issue is, is that the quality of the money. And it gave the opinion that it would not be appropriate for staff to make on behalf of the town representative certify to the bank that the work was not done based upon the records we had seen. Did not think that the quality of the bond was appropriate. So, and I don't think that anybody believes that if there was no work done in the board's. There was some question about, it was one thing in particular about the injection of the treaties. That when we looked at, and I'm kind of thinking back. So my recollection, because I think there were a couple of line items in the plan. But there was a question about, and, and Mark, and, and I didn't look at it, didn't. Summary of that. There were a couple of line items in the plan that sort of didn't, didn't specifically coordinate, you know, with the documents that we had been given in terms of the performance documents. So that's what I have to say in, in, in terms of this judgment. As far as requiring Mr. Breschow, Joseph Breschow, because it was Joseph Breschow, not Vincent Breschow. Came and asked for essentially the approval of this special. He agreed, the first condition of approval. I attached it to the memo. And I had actually never seen this until I asked for it. Because I knew, I knew that I had given the opinion that it would be a business. I, I mean, it's the first condition. This is all conditions itself. I'm gonna carry it over to this group. I'm a little bit surprised not to see it turn into a. Does he participate in my line?
Well, that's an interesting point.
I, I just, a little surprised because he did not give this one. Mr. Breschow not wanting to be found or whatever, such a traditional. I didn't participate in that process.
May, excuse me. The tree bond that we're discussing right now was to make us homeowners, make everybody stay away from harming the conservation easement. And the whole idea when we were discussing this a long time ago is that when you're building houses next to trees, you have to take extra special care. This has been done over a decade ago and it's not like all the trees have died. I mean, we cut trees that were dying or whatever we were allowed to cut at the time. And cabled trees, like we said, from the homeowners cutting the trees. What is a forty five thousand dollar tree bond gonna do right now? It's gonna hold somebody accountable for natural occurring trees dying? I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And it's been so long. I, I understand the first couple, two, three years are critical. I get it. But at this point. Right. I don't see how a forty, why make Mr. Breschow put up a forty five thousand dollar tree bond? And I don't blame him, honestly, because just about the history, I think that's all calmed down now. But. Again, it's naturally occurring. Trees are gonna die. It's what happens. So that's where we're at. We are willing to put up a tree bond. Right now, the letter of credit is not there. So we, I'm willing to work with staff to do what we have to do to finish up with the trees, finish up the last little bit of sidewalks I think there's left. Aside from the ones that Breschow fixed. So we're just trying to move on and.
Are those the only items that are left?
I think those are some manscaping and there's a small sidewalks, I think, that were left out.
And so, and we also have a discussion about the grading of the lots or the units that aren't improved yet. Those three items, I think, that are left on the bonds, two or three, separate from the forty five thousand dollars. I think should probably be addressed in a week or two, or two, one meeting or two meetings from now to either reduce or, or any ability to release those portions or the things that actually need to be installed after inspections could be had of those. I, I think the focus here is on whether the commissions. I'm willing to talk about whether the forty five thousand dollars for the tree preservation of the conservation. Still required or is, is something that can be discussed as being modified. And so that's where this is versus the, the bond reduction itself. I don't think there will be for those site improvements that need to be made, that, that needs to be inspected.
So it sounds like, just in some, it, it sounds like the homeowners association does not have a reduction to the bond not being.
We want to build the rest of the houses, start paying taxes. On the finished right now, basically more than just my property. Really want to start by. Continuing with the drainage, it was on.
That'd get, that goes along with finishing those two houses.
Correct.
So all of that work needs to be done simultaneously to make that whole area work.
And then we'll have twenty more houses.
Twenty two.
Twenty two.
Oh, yeah, twenty three. And those are the one on the water. There's one. And we have one left next to the pump house, right?
And then the conservation area, now for all the tears, seriously, I'm not trying to spare a guard. It's a natural occurring effect, like you said. And they're falling. Just what happened this past storm. Basically, a tree that fell down and had, he paid the association just a favorous tree. Come out and armor, armor covers. It's not the conservation, the common area.
Common area.
Correct, right, exactly. That tree could have fell and hit into our pump house. Army knows if that hits the pump house, that's our electronics, which is done by United Concretes. So that would be the end.
Yeah, so it's.
And that's one of the trees, one that asked me to cut a while ago that was dying that we went and cut, because it's, it's a bull's trap.
And what happened this time, we, we did it. A four. There were all those trees that fell, and Tori knows that. Year one sixty-two, fell right into the middle of the road. The community got out there, myself and Alan. My pole cutter, it's a huge tree, it had another community member come out. The, with this chainsaw, we threw it over and erect one of those, what do you call it?
The guide rail?
The guide rail. And unfortunately, we were lucky to get it out of it. We are care of our community. And the conservation area, which I believe that it was very important at one point, especially to the permission. To help. But looking at it right now. You know, one lady during the storm, she wanted to cut a tree. She didn't do any of that stuff. We're monitoring it. We're letting the homeowners know they cannot do that. That's why we came. And to the planning itself, and to get that specialty, get certain trees that were dangerous to the homes. So the liability would be the conservation area in the town. So we, as the community, had a special assessment. Those were fourteen thousand dollars. Taking trees down, which we had, our own arbers, we didn't park them, and do that, and came to the. Which is allowed to be done. Right, exactly. So we had been monitoring. Association had taken care of all. Retire.
No, we understand.
You know.
So, um.
I'm sorry.
Thank, no, we understand, we do understand, thank you very much. And, um, so, um. From my perspective, I'm open to a reduction. I don't know what the best commission's feeling is on this, but, uh, for the remaining amount that's, uh, left to be done, is there. Idea from staff as to an appropriate amount at this time, or?
They can't do it tonight anymore, because it's not no best, so it's. I think what Maureen is proposing is to go out there, because the worst of the sidewalks have been.
Those last seven days. Yesterday, but they got it. I didn't, wasn't even told. Through the break by. Because.
So we'll need to have this on our agenda another time, uh, once.
So those site items. And I'm going to differentiate the site items. Um. Normal bonding procedure with regard to reducing and reducing in accordance with the statute is still how much you have to retain for the year for their maintenance. Um, but the forty-five thousand for the tree bond is really what we're looking for direction on. Whether it's appropriate, or whether it's, I use some terminology, it's how they can legally change that.
Yeah, not, not to, not to demand that they replace that.
Correct.
Of the bond at this point. I mean, I think what we would do, again, this is not on the court's radar. From what I've seen. Um, so I think to simply by letter, according, you know, that that doesn't have to be. Replaced that.
If that's for the commission.
To, to deal with the settlement.
If that can be adjusted, if all parties agree. Even though it was in the settlement agreement, which is why we as staff have maintained it. Settlement agreement, we have to uphold it until the involved parties change it with mission. And the development. Um, so. A change to that is in your discretion per your. The way you'd like to proceed to, to, to change the. And bring new. A new set, and alter the settlement agreement. By agreement of all parties.
So we're just looking for a modification.
Yes, yes.
I don't have a problem with losing the bond. Uh. Lots that are not completed. We're here against the conservation.
No, just one.
I don't.
Uh, you know, that, that, the whole bond for that. It was concealed, only that lot was completed. Uh. And. Um. This is a long time ago. Uh. And it ended up that some. Tree was what people had wanted for conservation line, uh, some lots, but, uh. I don't remember exactly where that stuff. But I think that should be addressed in, whatever that is, uh, should be done. Whatever it is, do, you know. Uh, whatever's got to be completed now.
I mean, I.
We're, in sixteen years. We decided that, as you said, to not request a tree portion of the bond at all, having to find a way back. There's a point where you have to look at, you know. Nature taking over.
Right, sooner or later, it will all be bad.
Mr. Biella, do you have any comments? You're so quiet over there. I think that would be good. Are you agreeable to the being discussed?
And I kind of on the, um, the bonding for the units that are yet to be built.
Yep.
So we do have a mechanism within, um, administratively. As. All the other site work completed, you know, presuming that's going to be happening very soon, except for those lots. Um, what they were asked to, to provide was those lots in a finished state at this point for. Not being, you know, cleared and graded so that they could be mowed or what have you. Um, but then, at the time they're going to, um, build, take a permit out, it would be a bond just for that lot. A soil erosion control bond that would go with the lot instead of coming through the commission. Those, and I just want to clarify that, that your bonding doesn't necessarily have to hold to that if all the work has been done in the, um, in the site, because we do have that mechanism. To then, and it would be much like the way we would hold one per, an individual lot in a subdivision, but it would be for the unit and tied to. Or that, because that's when they would. The soil area, they have to provide the soil erosion controls and make sure that, um, unit area gets screened properly before they're not sealed. So that's where we would hold that.
All the conservation managers are in the right spot. And not move, they're in the right spot, and mark.
On to the next. All right.
So go.
Okay, let's move on. We have a lot on our agenda. So I think we'll see all of you in a few weeks. Thank you.
I mean, that's, okay. All right.
All right, um. Okay, yep. On to the next item. Uh, item five A, Carrier Enterprise Incorporated for site plan approval to construct a single-family dwelling on lot nineteen, map eleven dash three. Lot one thirty-two, Beverly Road, with an access easement over property identified as lot eight hundred and drive. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. It's nice to, well, the name, and you'll see, um.
Hey, what matter what is these?
Sooner or later, we shall be first.
It's all, it's all about the sword.
Uh, my name is Robert Ziegler, I'm attorney. President Carrier Enterprise. We've submitted this building, uh, application for building event, and that's what brings us here today. Um, I've had communication with, um, council, somewhat frequently with this application and providing certain information. And we'll note, uh, the information that you've been given, uh. Specifically concerning the history. Who's, of this, is accurate. This is a lot that predates zoning, so it's a lot of record. It was an application for relief from that in nineteen ninety-five, which was granted. And without site. Granted, but what had happened was easement that carriers got when we bought. It's litigated by attorney John McPulis, who was telling that. It was a favorable outcome for the clients. They let it rest for a bit, and then what brought us to it is Charlie Carrier's son. Would like to. There to live in. So that brings us here to that. Um, I'm looking at staff report dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty, page. Or, um, and it has the staff comments. One through eight on the. Eight. We can comply with all of them. Um, obviously, with regards to this ten thousand square foot, this is what's called the easement piece. Um, council, I can work together on that, uh, resolve that issue. To the council's satisfaction. Um, obviously, we would, I think what's outstanding, uh, is the engineering report, all the others are ready. Then we would need to know what the amount of bond of. So. With that being said, um, I, I'll take any questions of. The issues we have.
I'm not sure it happened.
So you're looking at these.
I am.
I will say, I will say. Rockford. Um. And then council. Uh, when it comes to. That this is a existing. Um, so there is no issue in it, uh, there is an issue with the term to access piece. Um, there was a. A lot line revision adjustment now that was referenced in statutory D that was not reported. And then it was what, was it what? Turned to. It was fine. Work out exactly by what mechanism, we'll go to the fix that. And I think that we'll be able to do that. Um, not, there's some content of it, uh, that, that makes it a little bit complicated. I don't think that you need to be, um, enveloped in details of that, because I think.
And is that matter contained in staff comments?
Yes, that's where the stat, the first comment, the status of the parcel with the access easement has been granted is to be rectified to the satisfaction of course. Counsel prior to the permit issuance and including filing the MyLaw, if. Regarding to the.
We can, we can do that. In the next week. After. It's not an issue, it's not an issue.
Uh, Maureen, do you have any other comments, or?
Um, no, just a note to the commission to explain that its functioning as a rear. Rear lots are subject to specific, site-specific site plan approval, which is why you're seeing a single-family house on a residential lot, which you don't usually see, but you see the one that are rear lots. This one, because of the access that it filed with the, um. The, the way the map is, the way it's going to function, it's going to function as a rear lot. We. Um, conjunction with corporation counsel determined that the proper action is the commission to look at it in order to do the site specific.
Okay. Um, commissioners, any questions?
Well, I, I got a couple of, uh, grading questions, specifically, uh, where the lot comes off, uh, the drive comes up through the mountain. Uh, we have a lot of. Grading lines, uh, very close to each other, meaning that there's, there's a. A big cut there in that driveway. Uh, just lanterns or paperwork, there is probably about. Ten percent grade. Uh. First of all, I think that's, uh, higher graded than permitted in the, the regs. Uh. And. Uh. Our regs say that it must be own. Uh, driveway to the. Figure. Okay, uh, not. By deed or, or anything else. Uh, and this is not a own parcel to the street. Uh, that's the, the question to be, because our regulations say. That it's got to be an own parcel.
So I, I. Um, so if you look at, again, the, the lot line revision adjustment map. That was referenced in the statutory foot clean deed, um, there is a note top that only means that, uh, the lot, the lot be. Was actually going to be transferred. And. So that would have taken care of. And what ended up happening was it ended up getting, it ended up getting transferred from, uh, YC to JC. Um, but that's what. And, and that, that's what I was referencing, the fact that ultimately, because what created that access was this proposed lot. And it should have been reported at the time of the statutory foot clean deed, because it indicates in the deed that those were. So it would have created that, and it would have created it in ownership to Carrier.
Well, that, that's what.
So we're, that's what we need to work out, so that's, yeah.
How, how you go get it to be ownership, that's my question.
Yeah, well.
The, the, the legalese. For me, counsel, I can work out to everyone's satisfaction, so it needs to stop. But regarding to your point with the, the grade, um, obviously, the engineer will have to comply with your regulations.
I can see attorney McPulis coming back on this, uh, quicker. Uh, because of the ownership and stuff like that. Uh, years ago, attorney. Hannah was questioned about the cell tower. You know, the number to lock. Of all kinds of other things.
I would just like to point out that this is a lot of record. It's exactly the same, but for the location easement, permit was granted by the property. So, um, if council has an issue with the ownership of. If you could, Maureen, back. Up piece, uh, so that. If, if there's an issue of one recording this map, I could do that tomorrow. If there's an issue as to, I think what you're raising is the ownership of this piece versus this piece. There's an, there's an agreement in place that's, that we can take title to the property, we can date Carrier Enterprises. Provided we get a building. So that issue goes away, and, and council's aware of that also.
Of, of. The main lot, yes, yes, I mean, the transfer, the transfer of that lot, that's a lot. Uh. Uh. Well, without the seventy-five foot.
When he's, when he's talking about the, the transfer of, uh, the lot that the, or the parcel that.
The driveway. But, but that's by.
Another, it's another carrier. That rules. That, not like, it's JC Development using. So.
Yeah, so it's not like you're stealing with, you're not stealing.
The grading issue is one thing again.
As I said, it goes to the legal lease.
Yeah.
I don't want to take care of, the grading issue goes away. Mr. Zig, Mr. Ziggman. Your issue with comparison grading. I agree with you, with engineers, you're much smarter than I will, will make sure it meets with you.
I mean, I, 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 I see, it, it's containing a lot of something going up there. Uh, and to get it down to, uh, nine percent or whatever it has to be at.
Oh, I mean, that just adds, you know, I mean, that, that's cost my fault.
It is.
I respect what Smith is like, well, it's like.
An aisle over the building from that to the building on the property, if it doesn't.
Formal.
The driveway.
Yeah, it's all.
I'm asking. I'd like to, you know.
The.
Oh, I could see this going a long ways on.
I don't have a problem with the house being built, I know the property, I would watch on it. But.
Yeah, my one concern was that.
Yeah, access to it is a question to visit the grades.
Yeah, my one concern was the access, but if the access is owned by the same people who are gonna be building the lot, the lot where the access is gonna be cut from is the same people, I don't see the question.
Well, and I can, I assume that when a motion is made, that the motion will include, um, that staff comments be addressed as part of the approval, which will take care of all of the housekeeping.
Yes, so I will make a motion to approve and with staff comments to have based.
Motion to is, is to approve, um, subject to staff comments?
Yes.
Yes. As well as.
I'll second that motion.
That's what I was trying to say.
So we have a motion by Mr. Rogan, seconded by Mr. Holtman, to approve subject to staff comments. Is there, is everybody?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I know, I know it's.
So you're voting against?
I voted against it.
Mr. Biella, in favor or opposed? So four to one.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
I can't hear you, Maureen. For the record, just to say that that means the motion carries.
I will say that, um, the motion carries, uh, four to one, uh, in favor of this application.
We always have that, that loop, what's the right number?
Yeah.
Someone has to look it back.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you for the reminder, Maureen.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, um, item six, public hearings has been, um, continued to the October first meeting. There will be no discussion this evening on military experience museum.
True, uh, maybe his, his letter, the record asks for it or?
Um, I, I don't think we need to, it was mentioned, but Fran.
I don't, it's just sitting here, so I don't know.
That, like, you've got, keep an eye on track. Will they receive a letter after questioning?
I don't know, I received it on paper, I was checking.
Um, okay, so, uh, the next item on our agenda is, um, executive session. Um, item eight A, discuss the status of pending litigation of Rio Vista Associates LLC versus Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission and town of Berlin and possible action related to same. Um, I assume that we will take, uh, both executive session items at the same time. Second item is item B, uh, to consider whether to convene an executive session to discuss the status of the pending litigation of Rio Vista Associates LLC versus Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission and the town of Berlin. Um, uh, and so normal practices to, to go into executive session. And we would like to invite counsel Jennifer Capola and Maureen Juisty staff for the town. Um, and do I have a motion?
Make a motion to, show me to executive session.
This is the last thing I would have. Cancel the, or, or adjourn the other meeting or?
There will not, they're not asking to take actions, so that is a good tip. It's a part of the executive session, so if there is anybody still remaining in the public, who's listening?
I think it's only, ours only, not the staff.
Um, so we can adjourn out of the executive session if we try, well, we have, there's no, they. They join the commission, the time of, I would say, session and the time of that, which is me to, so that's.
Okay, there's a, show.
We can shut everything down.
Okay, so I. Yep, so I think we have a mo- floor from Commissioner Ziggman to go into executive session of inviting Jennifer Capola and Maureen Juisty to join the commission, um, uh, discuss the Rio Vista items on the agenda. Uh, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Biella and, um, those in favor.
Alright.
Opposed, so moved, so, uh, we will go into executive session at this time.
Okay, I'm going to end the recording and the meeting, the regular meeting, and, um, stop the.
We'll plug on all that stuff.
We'll plug.